I didn't pick up who it was. I'll let Marcy figure that out. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Corey, we're handling the hearing in the public as we normally do?
Yes.
Okay.
I will get those as we go.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting from Jason. Was it, was that Stacy? I think.
Second.
Any questions on the agenda? Minutes, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, moving on to the personnel section of the consent agenda. I need a motion.
So moved.
Linda?
Second.
Danny? Any questions regarding the personnel section of the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. Okay, moving on to the remainder of the consent agenda. I need a, I need a motion.
So moved.
Jason and I think that was Linda. Uh, any questions regarding that section of the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's carried. I know we have some reports tonight, so there is no president's report. I'm going to turn it over to you, Corey.
Thank you, Mr. Civic. So a couple of things tonight. First, I want to thank our, our community, our parents, uh, who were able to join our, our three community sessions regarding our reopening plan. So thank you very much for your feedback and your input. Uh, we had several hundreds of questions, um, and we've updated all of our frequently asked questions on our reopening plan link, uh, to our district on the district website. So thank you so much. I think that, that helped everyone uh, clarify some questions. I know many people had similar questions, uh, regarding, uh, the reopening plan. So uh, we'll continue to, to keep that open and continue to answer questions, uh, for folks. I know that the, the buildings, uh, things are getting a little bit specific to the building as far as questions go, so feel free to reach out, uh, to them as well. Quickly, uh, just wanted to give a, an update. Today, the governor, uh, at his, uh, uh, public presentation talked about athletics and, um, a, a potential start date of September 21st for practices for low-risk, um, sports such as soccer. I believe tennis, um, swimming, um, cross-country. Those are a few of the sports, uh, that he had mentioned as low risk. Um, he did talk a little bit about some of the higher-risk sports, being able to start, uh, workouts and, and things of that nature. So there's still a lot of unknowns there as far as what that's going to look like, um, because we're currently obviously under Department of Health guidance of, uh, for many stipulations for reopening schools as far as social distancing. So we're going to have to sit and wait and see what guidance comes, uh, from the state level and from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, um, as far as what that looks like. Um, I think it's positive news for kids, certainly is. Um, any opportunities that they can have i- is, is, is a great thing for them. So uh, be on the lookout for more information on that. Um, one thing that I, that I'd like to mention, uh, would be, and, and I'll, I'll communicate this out, uh, to the board via email is to try to come up with a date to complete a, a board retreat, uh, sometime before the school year starts. Uh, we'll come up with a common date that we can, uh, uh, spend some time, um, thinking about, uh, goals for this year and, and also looking at some of the, the fiscal challenges, um, that we, uh, will be facing as well. Um, so at this point, uh, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Farrell, who's our assistant superintendent. Uh, one of the things that we're learning, uh, quickly is that the governor has, uh, unilaterally, uh, created a 20% cut uh, across the board to all state aid. Um, and so every area that we receive state aid is a school district. Uh, the governor ha- has made, uh, adjustments at this point. So we're still aren't sure whether it's just a withholding or if it's going to be a complete takeaway. Um, so we're still waiting to get more guidance on that. What we're hearing is it's leaning more towards a complete takeaway of that 20%. So, uh, Mr. Farrell, can I give you an analysis tonight of what that looks like for our school district moving forward just in this fiscal year? Uh, and the impact of that. So, uh, things that we consider, uh, and, and wait and see about are, uh, some federal stimulus funds that potentially could come to the state. Um, but that's still really up in the air at this point. Uh, so at this point, uh, Mr. Farrell, and then we've had meetings, uh, with CBO recently to take a close look at this and, and what the impact on a 20% across the board, uh, aid cut would mean, uh, for our school districts. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Farrell.
Okay, um, can you allow me to share the screen so I can s- put the, uh, graphic up?
Uh, I think you just, you should be able to do it now.
All right. Do you see that?
Yes.
Everybody see that? Okay, so, uh, as Corey said, um, the state has begun to reduce, uh, aid payments or state aid payments to school districts in the form of a 20% reduction. Um, the way that aid works is you don't receive all of your aid upfront at the beginning of the year. It is a scheduled payments. There are scheduled payments that occur throughout the entire year. Before we get into what this looks like, I think it's important that, uh, it, i- is to, is to get your mindset around the idea of cash flow and not so much around what we're typically talking about, which is budget. In a budget cycle, we are looking at expenses and revenues and balancing out, uh, the two to set a budget for the year. While our budget is now set for the 2021 year, the issue now is, is there's a reduction in revenue in which we were going to rely on. So it now becomes a cash flow issue because in a typical budget, revenues meet expenses and we still have expenses that we have to meet. So the way this slide works, or the way this graphic works, is this section here on the left is the payments that, or the reduction in payments that will occur with a 20% reduction over the course of the 2021 school year. So you can see that the first payment we, or the first reduction we will see is right here on September, in the September timeframe of $939,788. That's a 20% reduction to the September payment of state aid. Then you see in December, we'd expect another reduction in a, a 20% reduction in the December payment of $456,096. And as you can see throughout the year, it increases. And typically with state aid, what, the way it works is larger payments come in as the year goes on. So this September payment is, is important because at the beginning of the summer, we're at the end of our fiscal revenue cycle from the previous year and haven't quite begun the one in the next year. And we put out, um, all of the invoice or bills for taxes in the September timeframe, late August, where they're paid between through September, October, November, and all the way through. So we rely on what is called our unaprop- or, or appropriated fund balance or unappropriated fund balance in which pays our bills through the summer up until we start receiving, uh, revenue from both the state and from property taxes in which keeps us going through the year and operating. So this reduction of $939,000 right at the beginning of the year is a significant reduction to our budget or to our cash. On the right, you will see what are possible offsets to that money? How we might be able to use what is available to us to offset the money we're not receiving. The green is what are, what is indicated as the legal use of reserves. So what reserves are available to us that we might be able to use and pull money from. So think of about it as, as your savings account. You're no longer bringing in money that you thought you were going to bring in. So I'm going to tap into the savings account to pay for the bills. And that's what this would be. And this is what, in this particular fiscal year, in the 2021 school year, we would be allowed to use up to $1.2 million of reserves. Those reserves include, um, the employment, employee retirement reserve. It includes the teacher retirement sub-reserve. Um, those are the two main ones. And, uh, we can compensate and offset the reduction in payments receiving in, in state aid. As the year goes on, if the 20% reductions continue, you can begin to see what are the possibilities to offset. And this is where it gets very, very difficult. Um, the unassigned fund balance at 3%, basically at this point, we are at 3.5% unassigned fund balance as a, as a percentage of fund balance available that we could use. Anytime you start to, to use that fund balance, it lowers the valuable cash that you have on hand to operate. So as it keeps going up and you're seeing here, here's the years going, the, the year going along is moving up and the years going along here is moving up, you might offset with going down to 2% of unassigned fund balance that would use 400, we would require to use 477 and change to pay for, to comp- to compensate. And you do it down to 1% further trying to compensate to eventually to where you use all of the unassigned fund balance. And that would just get us to March. At that point, we would then have to dip into what is called the appropriated fund balance. This is our, our appropriated savings account that there are two possibilities of which we could use, which are the two 800,000 payments. That fund balance at this time is $1.6 million that's available. It would be by the time we get to June and even into September, the total amount of 20% is 4.6 and change, 4.6 million and change. We will have used all available legal reserves plus sign, unassigned fund balance and appropriated fund balance in, in order to meet our operating expenses. Okay? That's what happens in cash flow when the revenue sources that, of which we were budgeting for are now being reduced by that substantial amount. So it's a pretty dire look at what happens when, uh, we see these kind of cuts to state aid. Um, again, this is a projection of how it's going to go and if, and how things continue, um, at the state level. There is obviously conversations happening in the federal, uh, government around, uh, making states whole. We don't know what that's going to look like. We don't know exactly how much that means for us as a school district. Um, and at this point, it looks like Congress may not make any decisions until mid, mid-September, which if you look at this, we'll already start to see a substantial reduction come mid, mid-September of $939,000, almost a million dollars. So we have a significant issue in front of us in terms of cash and we need to make sure that we start making some decisions around how to handle this. Um, it's a very difficult situation because operating expenses in a school district really is about, mostly about employees. And we're going to have to probably make some decisions around that at some point. So that is where we are at this point in terms of cash flow. Um, any questions? Anything I can help you with? I think you're on mute, Gene.
I'm sorry. Like I said before, Bob, it comes down to whether or not this 20% reduction is in fact a takeaway or a delay.
That's correct.
I think you're walking a fine line between cash flow and budget. Um, but I understand what you're saying. I mean, it, it is, in this case, it's kind of one and the same, but it, the huge difference is whether or not we might ultimately get that 20% or at least some of it down the road. Um, and if that information were to come to us anytime soon, an option would be a revenue anticipation note as far as cash flow goes.
That's true.
You mean, you might not get it until May of next year, but if you're going to get it, that's the only criteria that you need to borrow the money on a, on a rand. Just to, you know, it's a huge difference, but unless or until or unless we hear that that 20% reduction is going to be returned to us somehow, then you're right. This, this is a pretty grim story.
And, and you're right about that, Gene. I agree 100%. That is an option. We did actually go out to, uh, the S and P, uh, analysis, um, uh, system that rates your, your organization for borrowing. We are A-plus rating at this point, which means we are in a good position for borrowing. And as you can see from the last meeting in terms of borrowing for capital, uh, money is somewhat inexpensive right now. Um, interest rates are very low. Um, so it wouldn't be an enormous impact in terms of the budget in terms of that. So it is an option. It absolutely is.
Well, and if, and if it turned out, you know, trying to be optimistic for a second, which is hard to do, I realize. But let's just say we find out in the next week or two that the 20% will eventually be restored to us. I mean, I would suggest you borrow all the cash flow you need upfront and then not worry about hitting your reserves because once they're gone, they're gone.
Well, I think one of the things we want to clarify too in this and, you know, and just talking about borrowings, um, and most recently we approved a borrowing for about 8.5 million that is for the capital project.
Correct.
Just to, just to clarify any confusion around those funds are directly used just for the capital improvements based on our capital project that was approved. Some might say, oh, wait a minute, you just borrowed eight and a half million dollars. Can't you just that money to get us by for the time being? And, and legally, we really can't do that. So I just want to clarify that, what that borrowing was and what that looks like. Uh, the revenue.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right, Corey.
Be something entirely different.
That's absolutely earmarked. Just for the capital project, you can't touch it for operating expenses, but the rand, the revenue anticipation note, that's exactly what they're built for. So again, it all, it's all, uh, you know, based on the fact that either you're going to get to 20% or 10% or whatever, or you're not. And if you don't, then, 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 then it's not an option.
So if we borrow, if we borrow from, no, if we use money, um, out of our reserve funds and then we find out the state is going to make us whole, we can't slide that money back into where we took it out of.
I, technically you probably could, Danny. I, I, you know, I, that, that would be a CBO question, but it, it would seem to me that you could put it back if, 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 uh, you know, the, the clouds dissipate and, and the, the picture gets better down the road.
Yeah, there, there is a little bit of legislation out there, uh, right now, uh, regarding, um, some of the borrowings from, from yourself in terms of other funds, uh, that we have available. Uh, one of the things I would say is, again, is this isn't, this is not a one-year issue that we're facing. If we go back and talk about, uh, 2007 to 2009 with the Great Recession, uh, that took upwards of seven years to come out of, um,
Yeah.
And this, this crisis that we're in right now, uh, looks to almost be, uh, a double the impact of that. So we're.
And that money, Corey, was a takeaway. We never got it back.
Right. So we're, you know, as much as, um, you know, initially, this is what we're faced with. The other thing we have to keep in mind is this is, this is a several-year problem that we're going to face in terms of aid reductions and, and loss of revenue as a school district. Um, so we've got to, we've got to be cognizant of that moving forward as well.
Well, like, like I said, it, you're walking a fine line between cash flow and budget. Uh, because really what it comes down to is budget, because if they take away 20% of your revenue, then your budget, uh, your expense side of your budget needs to, uh, also come down 20%. It's that simple. That's the law.
Yeah.
Your budget, your, your expense and your revenue have to match. So.
Yeah.
But I, you know, cash flow, you need the money when you need it. Uh, but if you're never going to get it, then that's a different story altogether.
Yeah, I agree with you, Gene, on what you're, what you're saying. It's, it's really the question of what you're posing is, is it a takeaway or is it a, a delay? And it's very unclear right now.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I'm always, I'm presenting always in a, in a worst-case scenario that it's a takeaway because I, that's how New York has operated in the past.
Yep.
And we've been through it, you and I have been through it enough times to see it. And, um, they don't always give the money back. So it's, um, in, in this particular scenario in which I'm presenting, that's what I'm presenting is that assume that they are not going to give it back. And as you get out into the year, it's going to be very problematic without receiving the revenue. And.
Well, and I honestly, in that, in that, under that scenario, Bob, I think you'd agree. You know, I've seen districts that, that wiped out their, their fund balance and it's, it's a pretty ugly picture from there on out.
Right.
So this is, that's not something that I think the district, you know, wants to do. Um, and from a fiduciary standpoint, the, the board, uh, that's our responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen. So I, I would say that if this turns out to be a, a definite takeaway, that's a whole different problem than, than cash flow.
Is there any advantage until we know for sure one way or the other of, um, borrowing the money? And then if we have to pay that loan off out of the, uh, fund balance?
Um, I, I think, I, I think to Gene's point about cash flow and budget, you, there are, what you're seeing on the screen here is a, is considerations. So one consideration is the one that you actually brought up right, uh, immediately, Dan, was why not use what we have and can we fund it back later? If we can answer that question and let's say that we can, and you're really just borrowing from yourself. You're, you're, you're taking from your savings and moving it over. And if the board can pass resolutions legally to do that, then that's, that's one option. And then you can delay borrowing if necessary. If we end up not having, not being able to do that, and once you use them, it's up and they're gone and you cannot return them, then I think borrowing becomes the question, the, the real answer. And, or the other option is, is you begin to reduce expenses. Um, I, I don't think borrowing is a huge problem, um, because it's, it's not overly expensive right now. Um, just to give you a sense, we just locked in an effective rate of 0.06% on, you know, on whatever million dollar. I mean, you're, that's very, very inexpensive. At the same time, I do think that, uh, the short-term outlook and the long-term outlook have to be considered both at the same time. Because revenue right now in New York State is obviously a significant problem, but let's just look over the last, last six months. What they're not talking about is revenue into the next filing fiscal year, which is bound to be lower because all tax revenue in the following fiscal year is based on this fiscal year. So right now, people are not operating at full capacity in their businesses. So we have to anticipate out into next budget season that we're going to have some significant, uh, revenue issues in New York State. I, I, at least this is my opinion on it. Um,
So one of the things.
I hope that answers your question. That's why, we can certainly do it. It's about, you know, when we would decide to do that. You don't have to do it immediately. If, if, if that helps.
One of the things to clarify in this, in this 20%, so this is legislation that the governor, uh, got approved. So the 20% is a flat 20%, no matter what school district, whether you're a wealthy school district or whether you're a poor school district. So there's, there's very little equity in, in this, in this 20% uh, cut at this point. Um, and, and doesn't appear to be any changes on the horizon with that. So I think one of the things that, that we have to consider too, I know in our budget presentations this past year, uh, we talked a lot about the, those great recession years and what that impact looked like when federal stimulus funds do come in, like, like era. We all remember the era funds that came in, uh, during that time. And there's this boost of funds that come in for a couple of years and then it's gone. And then there's a drastic decline. If you haven't, if you haven't balanced out your expenses, uh, to what your real revenue is going to be when those, um, when those stimulus funds go away, that's when you get yourself in a lot of trouble, uh, as a school district. And I know that that happened to several school districts um, in the past. And I think that's something we have to be really careful about. Um, even if we do see, uh, some, some support, uh, come in a, in a stimulus plan, we have to be cognizant of, of not just now, but the, the several years to come here. Any other questions about, uh, Bob's, the presentation?
Well, I agree with you, Corey, about that. And of course, we can't predict, nobody could see, nobody saw this coming, right? Nobody saw the, the, the 2000, the Great Recession that we went through, uh, back in 07 through 09 and all of that. But, um, I agree with you. You need a, you need a, a, a plan and, and I don't, I, I've always argued this, that, you know, with school districts, you can't predict what's going to happen because here's a, here's a perfect example, right, of, of that. Um, but I, I, I do think that we need to find out uh, whether or not there's going to be any kind of federal stimulus, uh, coming down the, the road. Uh, because that would at least, uh, alleviate us ha- having to deplete our reserves. I mean, it doesn't change the picture necessarily for all the reasons you said, but at least the funding source might be uh, more favorable to go that route rather than to wipe out all of our savings.
Yeah. Yep, agreed. Any other, any other questions, comments, thoughts regarding? And we'll continue as we get more information. You know, we're working with CBO, uh, daily as we get more information and updates. We'll certainly, uh, you know, bring those to you. And this will be an ongoing conversation, uh, for quite some time. So in, in, in moving down in, into the next portion of, of superintendent highlights, so you've, you see some policy, some first read policies, uh, that we're, we're bringing to you. Uh, many of these policies really are COVID-19 related. These are from NISBA. Um, and these are, these are policies that we're recommending that we take a look at currently. Um, there's a lot here at the moment and we've been, we've been working behind the scenes. Um, certainly, uh, Stacy will, will want to touch base in the next couple of weeks to, uh, to dive in a little bit more into these policies, um, from a policy committee perspective here, uh, before we bring them to, uh, to the second stage of approval. So um, you can take a look at those over the next, uh, week or so. Um, one of the things I, I, I'd like to rec- recommend as well is that we look at the possibility of an additional meeting before September 14th, because I think it'll be important that, uh, we have, uh, most of these policies in place. Um, and any, and possibly any updates that, that we'll need to make regarding code of conduct. Um, some, some attendance policies and, and things of that nature. So, um, I'll, I'll share that with you, uh, some options for that, uh, moving forward as well. Anybody have any questions about any of those, those policies that come from NISBA that are recommended, uh, really primarily, uh, most of them are towards COVID-19 adjustments? Okay, so, um, so tonight, I know, I know that for, uh, several weeks now, we've been talking about our reopening plans. We've shared our reopening plans. We presented our reopening plans. Our, our reopening plan, uh, you know, was submitted to the state, uh, several weeks ago for approval. Um, and, and basically it's still, it's, it's in, it's in draft, but final format where we can make adjustments as we go as needed. So really tonight, uh, as a board, um, I'm just bringing this to you as, as an affirmation to say, uh, you know, in a vote that you're comfortable with our reopening plan, um, that you feel our reopening plan makes sense. Um, and that, you know, you're confident, uh, in, in what we have, what we have planned moving forward. Uh, there has been some, some movement across the state, uh, of school districts going to completely remote models for a period of time. Um, every district is in a different scenario based on their community, uh, and what they're dealing with. Some have universities, uh, within their communities that they're dealing with a large influx of, of people that are coming back. Um, some have mobility issues. Uh, so there, there's a variety of reasons that some have, uh, have decided to go completely remote. So tonight, really, uh, Mr. Civic, I'm just asking, uh, for just an affirmation from the board that we're comfortable with moving forward with our plan of, of really bringing, um, our pre-K through six kids to school every day. Um, and then obviously kids have a remote option at that level. And then our hybrid option, uh, at the 712 level, uh, where students will be, uh, on campus, uh, twice a week. and then remotely the other days of the week. And then also students have a a remote option there as well.
Okay, Corey. I I guess at this point, I'd like to give the board, uh, all the members of the board a chance to ask any questions or or have bring up any comments they have before we uh before we vote on this. Anybody? Okay. Everybody's being shy. I I I guess at this point, uh, are you actually looking for a vote, Corey?
Yeah, I just need an affirmation vote that says, you know, as a board, we're we're comfortable with moving forward. I know that we, you know, we put two large committees together that had board representation on each of the committees. And um, you know, obviously, it's still in somewhat draft format, even though we have this solid plan in place. So, because I think we know that we're going to learn things as we go, or we might need to make some minor adjustments here and there, and we'll certainly update that uh as we go. And I think that that's understood at the state level as well, that uh, nobody is an expert per se in in dealing with uh, you know, reopening schools in in the middle of a pandemic. And uh, you know, we're going to learn as we go. And that's really what we've communicated in the community forums that um, you know, every question is a good question and, you know, we'll analyze every one of those questions. And we may get uh open and find some things work really, really well and other things need adjustments. So.
Well, I'd like to say that based on what I've seen in with the districts across the area, I think that this plan is is very well thought out. I'm very comfortable with it. And uh, um, so I guess at this point, I'd ask the board for a a a vote on this. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? There you have it, Corey. Seven oh.
So that's really uh from from my standpoint tonight, um, what I have, obviously, we're, you know, we have a lot of work to do uh to continue to to begin to think about getting staff here. Um, the first week, uh, that's September eighth and eleventh. Um, we have uh several trainings uh that we want to, that we want to work on uh in in getting that information out to staff. So we're working behind the scenes and they've been really patient. Um, you know, with us in terms of that. So there's, there's obviously health and safety. Uh, there's some some technology and privacy things that that we'll have training on. Uh, we have been doing some testing over the past few days um regarding uh technology and how that's going to work in classrooms. So we've been running some scenarios of of systems uh with with Zoom and, you know, working through all the glitches that could come about. Um, not that we couldn't experience a new one, uh, but trying to get ahead of it and and deal with any of those situations uh right now. So we're we're working on that. Um, that will certainly be important. Um, we have some virtual orientations that we're putting together. Um, I think that first week from the eighth eighth to the eleventh, uh, we're working on plans to be able to reach out to students and to parents and and to kind of give a a virtual orientation of what to expect uh in the classroom with the teacher or by uh grade level as well. So we've got a lot of work to do. Um, uh, you know, the plan is in place, but there's several details that still uh need to be worked out along the way. And, you know, I can't think our, obviously, our board and and our staff have been extremely supportive. We had a staff uh virtual staff meeting with roughly two hundred and fifty uh members that attended. And, um, you know, had great questions and and thoughts around, you know, moving forward. And we continue to work with with the committees and groups, you know, as we try to reopen here. So um, appreciate appreciate all the work that they're doing.
Corey, you mentioned having another meeting before September fourteenth. Are you going to do that on the side or did you want to talk about it tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I want to talk about it. I thought I'd throw out some some potential dates to look at. I know Labor Day, uh, you know, typically, we've been going on Mondays, but with that Labor Day weekend, Monday might be tough for folks. So maybe pushing it to somewheres in the around the tenth or eleventh possibly. And then we'd have another meeting on the fourteenth. It's just so we can make sure we're clearing up any of these policies or procedures that we need to have in place uh for when kids uh walk through the doors on September fourteenth.
Right. The tenth and eleventh are a Thursday and Friday. I mean, maybe uh eighth and ninth or ninth and tenth, uh, that'd be a, a nine, the ninth is a Wednesday. I don't know if that works for everybody or maybe, you know.
Have Marcy poll the board and
Yeah, that probably would work better.
Okay. And we'll communicate out what the what the best date is and we'll move forward from there.
I'd be interested, Corey, if we've gotten any uh questions from the public.
Sure, let me uh pull them up. So there is a question here from Karen Hall. Ask, does the money include unusable athletic balance? Um, so right now, right now, we don't know in this fiscal year really what's going to happen with athletics. There's been some talk about pushing some fall sports to the spring. Um, and then today, the governor saying that some sports may be able to begin. Um, last year's athletic budget would have just been in in last year's final uh fund balance reports um for um for that fiscal year. This is an entirely new fiscal year.
Right.
That is the only question I have at this point.
Okay. Well, uh, they can still ask questions and and you'll respond to them as you receive them.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, then, uh, we have no board committee reports. Uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Linda?
Second.
Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Well, good night, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.